That's home.
Last chance, let's go.
Are you gone? Oh, I totally forgot to respond.
So a little bit, probably.
We are already signed up. I can't go. So if you'd like to go on the floor,
Yeah.
we'll get your name in there.
Yeah.
It's Friday Tuesday.
Hopefully Debbie Durham's gonna speak. Microphone must be on.
Progress nonetheless.
Yeah.
Ten seconds.
Time.
It's time, almost.
According to my clock, it's five o'clock.
Is it you that asked me for this?
It's her.
Okay, it is five o'clock and we are going to adjourn the work session for February twenty-fourth. And item number one is Go Polk City Development Survey Discussion. Thank you to all of the Go Polk City members who are here. Appreciate your input on this. And Chelsea, are you going to lead us off or how are we going to go?
Yes, I will start. Good evening, everyone. So I think it was the December council meeting, someone requested that we send out a survey to recent developers to get feedback on the development review process that the city has. Anytime there's a subdivision or a site plan or some sort of new development within the city. So I know Go Polk City had worked on a survey and the Go Polk City Board had talked about the development survey. And I think I got some clear guidance from the council in January on what the intent of the survey would be. So for tonight's meeting, the city staff prepared some survey questions. I think there's some room for improvement. I know I got some feedback from several of you throughout the day-to-day. But it's it's a short survey to try to engage participation. So I prepared that for this evening for a starting point for discussion. And I think the council would like that the Go Polk City, Go Polk City send the survey out. So I will leave it at that. I'm here to answer any questions, but I know that some of the representatives from Go Polk City are here as well tonight.
So before we turn it over, if I may, I'd like to ask the rest of my peers on the council to help refresh my memory, especially after a two-week vacation. I remember discussing this in December, but help me understand or recall what our intent was. What were we hoping to accomplish with getting a survey? Did we have a plan in place for the results of the survey? What was our thinking process of having the survey before we actually get into the survey?
So I can answer that from my perspective because I was the one that requested it. Originally, I just not something that we've done. I've talked about surveys in a couple of different instances. I know larger communities, you know, with a larger personnel and means to do so, get feedback on a number of things. And of me, most interesting is our process to get approvals and requirements and overall opportunities to make things better, faster, you know, less intrusive to potential developers. And so I'd reached out to Stacy before that. And I know we've had instances where it's not gone good. It's not clear to me if that's where that lies. And I also know that inherent to the process where you know, a certain amount of us being particular with how we do things that is going to manifest in developers squawking about, well, you're hard to deal with. Okay, how many times does that mean we're hard to deal with? And how many times does that mean we have high standards? I don't know. So that's probably the major instance. But I think just overall feedback through the last campaign process, there was a lot of talk about economic development. And I don't know that we've done anything meaningful to make that easier or what that is specifically to make economic development easier to do. The larger factors are availability and proximity roads and all those things that are more difficult to control. But in an effort to have influence on the things that we can, I think survey results, feedback on where improvements could be made is a good first step. That's just me.
That's you. So I guess I would like to open it up to see if anybody's willing to share any of their thoughts.
Yeah, I'll give my opinion. Yeah, it's also the timing right now. We've had more commercial development than we have in a long time. And I've said, what does economic development mean? Well, it kind of depends on where we are. Like if we have a lot of things to fill, spaces to fill, then that's economic development. I think where we are right now, economic development, a piece of that is understanding what our benefits are, what our challenges are and what we can do to position ourselves to be the community that people choose to develop in. So, you know, I would like to draw out, obviously, what are our main selling points? And they can capitalize on that and sell those. But also, are there things within our process that are cumbersome that, you know, a developer would tell their friends, eh, that's, you know, a pain? Are there policies we have that they're like, you know what? You make me have this much brick and nobody else does. And why do you do that? And we're like, oh, we didn't really, you know. So drawing out that feedback where we can make decisions of, do we want to stick with some of those things that are bothersome? Or do we want to relook at some of our policies? I don't know if we'll get a lot of that specific, but if it's out there, now's a good time to know about it and decide if we want to make changes so that we can position ourselves as some of the other development areas open up. You know, we've been thinking and working in the meantime of what makes us really attractive to people or overcoming potential obstacles or if there are things to kind of work through.
No, I appreciate the comments from both of you. I guess I was just kind of a little unsure. You know, I've I've had history in my career with surveys and, you know, you're not going to get any of the, hey, you did this great type of stuff, right? It's all going to be very subjective. It's all going to be negative. Some of it's very point in time, kind of what you alluded to. So I'm just kind of curious of what our thoughts would be. I understand the reasoning. Then from there, if I may, continue to ask both of you since you spoke, would you think we would take that feedback and then look at potentially creating some sort of remediation plan or just addressing the results? I guess I'm hopeful that we can understand what the expectation is. We're going to create this. Is it going to come in, sit in a vacuum and we're not going to do anything with it as a council?
I think it should.
Okay.
And I'll give my opinion first. Again, as we've talked with Go Polk City and said, you know, we give you this money, we expect things out of you. What's your best? I think it would be great if Go Polk City is initiating this. Then they can take it, they can digest it and they can come to council with some recommendations, you know. Hey, these things were, you know, five survey respondents said that this specific thing was a big deal to them. Did you even know? Do you want to look at your policies? So I would see the results leading to future conversations of what can we improve within our processes? And are there any, you know, policies that we have that we should look at changing? I think Go Polk City should also use all of the selling points, you know. Again, draw out some of the positive and use those as selling points as they're making connections and telling everybody that they should come to Polk City. So I think there's a couple of different avenues, but yes, to having future discussion.
Yep. No, that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, there's no point in a survey if you're not going to do something with it until you know what that is. I don't want to prescribe, you know, what to do with it. But and I would disagree maybe in the margins that does feedback skew a little bit more negative or highly positive? Yes, you're middle of the road. I don't usually fill out a survey if a restaurant was average or whatever, you know what I mean? But I would hope that this is a little bit more engaging in that, you know, a one-off experience of I got to spend the time fifteen minutes doing a survey. The breadth of this takes months, if not years. So spending fifteen minutes on something that was that big of a piece for a lot of developments, I do think we'll, I'm hoping we can get robust feedback. And so, yeah, depending on where the information presents itself, I mean, it's on us to, we've wasted people's time if we're not going to do anything with that. I think some of it would be oriented, like Mandy said, to more actionable on our side. Some of it on Go Polk City's side. I'd love to hear how you guys fit into this. I know strategic planning is something that you're working on too. So, you know, I think there's overlap worthwhile discussion, just like you said. But absolutely, I, you know, I would have hoped we would further into this discussion at this point, given how long we've been talking about it. So I'm ready to get the feedback and apply it however, however it leads.
Thank you both for answering. I appreciate it. So kind of that helped get my mindset more as we turn it over to. So before we go on, let's let Nick and Nick, any comment you'd like to make?
I just want to echo, I think Rob said it really well. I think it behooves us to identify what's actually being, stopping people from developing in Polk City versus what is our high standards. I would love to hear that. And yes, if it's something that's high standards that we don't need to move on, then that's something that we're going to have to work with developers around. But if it's something in our process that's actually holding them back, it does behoove us to look at it and figure out a way forward.
Jeff?
Yeah, I would echo what everyone's been saying. I think that this is the tip of the iceberg when it comes to economic development and research. You know, to really make this fruitful, we need to understand the market, complete a market analysis of the community, understand supply and demand, understand the developable areas, who wants to build, why they want to build, where they want to build, have the data available to prospective developers that want to come into town. So that they basically take the one or two-page cut sheet from the city of Polk City and go, yep, that's what I'm looking for. So they can quickly analyze the needs. And then if they have those questions, they can come to you guys or come to the city and understand the advantages as well as the shortcomings of why build here? Because we may, we may want the world, but if we don't have the infrastructure, then we can't build it. Or they can't build it and we can't support it. And that's okay. I mean, it's okay to say, no, you know, we can't support a data center. We don't have the infrastructure. And it's probably something we don't want anyway, but we have to be ready to answer those kinds of questions.
So, thank you. Let's turn it over to Go Polk City. And anybody got any opening remarks based on what you've heard? If you want to come up to the podium, that's great so we can hear you in the microphone.
Yeah, I thank you all for taking the time to look into it. I do think that I would echo everything you were all saying. I think it's a great way to gain some more information and see, you know, where we're hitting the mark and maybe where we're missing it. And plus, it could be, you know, knowing that the city has these questions out and they're interested in hearing it also goes a long way too. So I think the questions that were presented were great too. So that's all I have for now. I have questions of course deployment, but I think we'll get there eventually.
Okay, good. Question by question or what do you want to do?
I can answer that too.
Yeah, I'm Brandon Converse and Go Polk City Board President. And, yeah, like Stacy was saying there, you know, we heard, the board had heard that this is something that the city council would like to see happen and presented in a survey. So we're happy in all ears to listen to that. These questions that have been prepared look like a great starting point for us. I think there's been maybe some additional feedback. We can revise and rework these a little bit, but we'll be, we'll be ready to get these released, you know, soon and get the feedback. Because I think too that it's beneficial to see, get a pulse on how things are going, how things have been for businesses that have recently come into town, developments that are taking place, find out some strengths and opportunities for improvement and go from there. So I think it'd be good to see that data. And like Mandy had mentioned, that's something that we can get that information, look to prepare something and bring it to the city council.
So Go Polk City has seen these questions, correct?
Yes.
All right. So the question becomes, do we go through these questions question by question? Or do we have Go Polk City, if they have already, bring their changes to these proposed questions? So how would you like to proceed, Brandon?
I can't speak on behalf of all of us. I don't know that we've, we haven't really, I guess, had any discussion yet about the questions in particular.
Who put the questions together? I guess I'm not even clear about that. Did you guys?
Wait, the city staff put them together.
Okay.
We just worked on some, we tried to keep a short survey, just because people are more likely to participate.
Yeah.
And tried to take the feedback that you all gave us on what you want to see in a survey and address the questions that way.
So can I propose that if, you know, if the survey's coming out from Go Polk City, I think it's yours to finally own. And I don't say that in a way to, you know, here, you go take homework. I mean, like the final say is yours. I guess if we can provide direction on tweaks or feedback or additional questions or rephrasing or I don't know how great they ever want to get and then turn that over to you, is that, is that fair?
That's fair.
The other big component for me is I think in order to get, in order to get honest feedback, it can't go to the source and it also has to have the commitment to anonymous participation. So not, there's this one-step removal. And again, I guess part of it's relative to your guys' work, so that wouldn't be a removal. But for the city, it would. And then Survey Monkey's the only one I've used. I think they, they have a way to send it out and then return it with anonymously. So that would be my preference just to get more honest feedback. It makes it harder to be actionable when you don't have all context on where it's coming from. So I could see, you know, I would lean again more towards anonymous than having names, but they may have strong opinions on anonymous versus not.
I'm fine with anonymity. Anonymity. I think there's opportunities in this, in this survey, if you were to use like a Survey Monkey or a social pinpoint or some other online questionnaire survey, if they want to provide specific information to their development, to their problems,
Yeah.
then they can. I mean, that's fine. But.
Yes, you could have like something at the very end, like if you have specifics or want to provide, you know, like give the option. But I think, yeah, anonymous is typically the most honest way people provide feedback.
So question ten lends itself to that. If somebody wants to talk in specifics about something that impacted them as a business, they can. For example, in question ten. So you can have it be anonymous, but if somebody wants the opportunity to do that, then that's there too. Question eleven sort of lends itself to that too. You can put your name down for your business, so.
The only thing I would say on ten is remove negatively. I mean, that seems a little leading. I would want to know specific requirements that impacted your developments, positive or negative. Leading to me is, it doesn't allow.
Yeah, I like that because, I mean, somebody might say, boy, Go Polk City was so helpful. They told me everything I needed to know and that's great feedback. So I do like that idea. And then I think to get nitpicky, and I know we're diving down to ten rather than in order, but code section, maybe we put if applicable or, you know, something in.
For example?
Yes, yeah.
Because maybe it wasn't a code-specific item, maybe it was something else.
Yep.
Good or bad.
Okay, so, I mean, since you guys haven't really looked at these questions that closely as a group and, I mean, I know council has looked at them because they've, they've had them. So maybe that should be our next step, that Go Polk City take a look at the questions and see what kind of changes you'd like to offer up? Or if you'd like to add questions or something that doesn't make sense to you? And go back and forth with city manager? Who put, city staff put these questions together, so back and forth with city staff.
That sounds like a good plan. We've got an upcoming board session so we can discuss these. And if there is additional revisions or stuff from the city, just let us know. We can keep that dialogue going, so.
So that's just proposed, council. If you want to do something else during this time, we can certainly do that.
What is it, are we still gonna, do we want to talk through? I know we've, some of us have passed stuff on to Chelsea, but do we want to talk through any other feedback that we have? But I see Eric standing up, so maybe we'll let Eric talk first and then we. Not to take over, sorry, I just saw him standing there and I didn't want to keep talking.
Sure. One of the items that I've thought about as I got this list of questions and get your feedback of wording it, but I've had a pretty great opportunity to finance a significant number of projects here in town development-wise and commercial projects. One of the items that sticks out to me, just from a finance perspective, is really the unexpected kind of capital and sometimes costs that have come along with some projects. So I'm looking, I don't know that that specifically comes into necessarily a code or any verbiage along those lines. But there is sometimes an additional capital of a policy or an item or that. And I think that's something that's valuable to know. I like to know that as a banker perspective, if there's a cost towards a project timeline of maybe above and beyond what they might have to spend somewhere else. So looking for feedback on what that could possibly mean from a wording, if that's something that interests you, something that is valuable and interesting, I think, from a perspective of how we sell developments and making sure that costs and everything that comes along with development are as much upfront as we can possibly do, so.
I think that is a very valuable piece of feedback and I do think that matters to a lot of people. So I don't know of the wording or where to weave it in, but I would support and encourage getting that information through the survey.
Totally agree. There are two items that I've consistently heard is, one, what you just said, not understanding, and I will admit that, you know, when I'm not writing the checks, it's easy to say we want this and we want that. But understanding the cost of the requirements that we have to our process, that's a big inclusion I would like to see a question on. And then the communication, what is due, when is it due? How does it flow to the overall process? There are two, like I've got some other things too that I would like to see in here. I hundred percent believe in Chelsea's point that, you know, sending out a fifty-question survey is not going to get what we want it to. But I would trust Eric, you're like, I don't want to put this all on you, but I kind of do want to put this on you. You're on the board for Go Polk City. You've gone through this process very recently. I would be fine saying, what are your top fifteen questions and no more? Let's do that. So however much you want to get involved with this, again, I hate putting you on the spot like that, but we've got a very unique opportunity, given your willingness to serve on the board and having gone through the process here very, very recently. So, but those are my two, I guess.
And there's been a lot of beautiful buildings and developments built here. So I'm not saying the requirements are all bad or that it's a cost that necessarily shouldn't be there. But how does that relate to other communities, other developments that might, you know, maybe a similar outcome, but not necessarily known? And how do we combat that? Because it might be something that needs to be in there, but how do we get that upfront? So budgets and things like that aren't necessarily taken into account at the, while you've already spent a bunch of money to get to X, because it's really difficult at that point to backtrack. So it's a lot of upfront expenditures to get to that section of it.
So go, you go ahead.
I'd love to hear from you and anybody else who's been in your position as well as part of this. Maybe we identify a group of developers who have gone through this process and hear specifically those costs. Rob said it's easy when we don't write the checks to not understand where these costs are. There's a lot of unknown knowns that I think that are out there that we just don't realize. So I want to hear those things. What is, what are those costs? What are the small hiccups that you guys hit that hold you back? I want to hear that from you, from anybody else that has that kind of feedback for us.
Yeah, I think some of those items.
If we can get that in the survey, that's great. If we can do that as an addendum from people we identify as an after-survey roundtable or something similar, I think that would be very useful.
Yes, you kind of was where my mind was going is because I agree with a short survey. People aren't going to do a lengthy survey. And then sometimes too, to really get that information that you're talking about, I don't know how easy that is to really draw out with a short survey question. Again, if you have an idea, great, but maybe it is something where we ask, you know, if they, if a handful of them would be willing to participate in a working group to help develop recommendations or feedback or, you know, expand upon it. Because, yeah, I don't know, again, if you guys can get it into the survey concisely, great. But I would leave that as an idea for you guys to consider as if, based on survey results or what we're able to get in as questions, if there's value in having a group discussion with.
That could also be a question on there. Are you willing to?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can meet?
Yeah, because again, something like your specific thing you just brought up, is it that our costs are different? Is it that they're not well-articulated? Is that we can't find it on the website? So that's where we want to drill in and figure out what's the actual issue, you know. But that'll take work and time, I'm sure.
One that goes into my, you know, the code part, I think is hard, especially if you're not, you know, doing a project necessarily immediately to go back and necessarily cite a specific code that was an issue or problem or a benefit or whatever that might be. But to talk about the source of it, you know, that might go from internally from the city of recognizing, well, that's where this actually come from. And, you know, because it's, you know, that's a, that's a process that only the city staff really knows internally is how that goes. So to be able to help find a part of that and be able to have then the city give the tools to be able to utilize that.
Because I think that, I'm going to stop after this one, I promise. Because I think that is valuable because you think of the people that are going to likely locate in Polk City. They're not savvy developers. They are small businesses. So they're, you know, we have builders that are, you know, developers. We have some companies that are bigger developers, but really, I think a lot of what we will attract to Polk City in the coming years are small businesses. And so the more readily available and easy to understand, and like I said, whether the issue is code, flyer, website, you know, like how to make that. But I think that's probably something well-developed at some point.
Chelsea, we have all the checklists available for development projects on the website.
We do.
And I thought we had like a cheat sheet for hookup fees and the costs that we're talking about that, you know, some of the smaller developers might not realize or encounter later in their financing packages that just forgot about. I thought we had something like that out there, but maybe it was buried in something else.
Is that what's on the building? Is that what's on the building permit?
With specific hookup costs?
We do.
Okay.
I think that when, as a staff member that works directly with the developers, I think with a piece that they're talking about from a cost is the cost it is to build the building to that code. So it's not so much the city's costs. You know, they know we're going to charge seventy-five dollars an acre or they know that our review costs are X, Y, and Z per hour. It's more of, our engineer works with their engineer. They come back and say, okay, it's going to cost this much to do signage that way or to do the landscape buffer this way or to do, I don't know, whatever the case may be. It's more that cost, if I'm understanding you.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Well, that's interesting because what I was thinking is neither one of those things. What I've heard is the cost to produce all the things to go through the process. Like it takes time to put together all the materials that we require and, you know, lengthens the process and when is it due and all of those things. So that's where I, I don't want to presume too much, which is a tough thing to say. You know, how do you ask a specific question enough to get the response that you need while allowing them to focus wherever they want? So all that's to say, I definitely think we need a cost and process. Couple of questions in here, but allowing them to expand as they see fit is a big piece.
Thank you. Jake, you're in as part of an established development company. Anything you want to share?
No, I think.
You might have to come to the microphone though. Not might, you will have to.
Yeah, I think just as you guys were talking through that, talking with our development team, understanding the comparisons of Polk City versus other municipalities we deal with. And that's some feedback I can get internally and have that part of our process and discussions and give that back to you guys as well. But, you know, I don't think, just off the cuff, Polk City does anything much different or way out of the norm of any other municipalities. And I know some that are more stringent that are quite. municipalities, and, and I know some that are more stringent that are quite frankly harder to deal with. So from that standpoint, I don't think it's going to take much to get that information, but I'll, I'll definitely work on that feedback internally and, and reply back to everybody.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Laramie, you haven't had a chance to speak, would you like to speak as a Go Polk City board member? Okay, that's, anything else from council members?
So where do we go from here then, I want to make sure.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions, I mean, we have a survey, we've talked about potential changes to this survey, rewording to this survey. I mean, it seems kind of lengthy to go through it question by question here.
That's, that's not what I was asking, I mean, is the expectation then that Polk City, Go Polk City is going to go back, massage the questions to their satisfactory, and then go out and send it, and then come back and provide the data?
I, I guess I would ask, could, because I, I agree with Mandy, now is the time on this, and as we move, and I know it's gotten a lot warmer, but it's going to continue to get warmer and development is hopefully going to pick up, but if we could maybe, and I'm just using timeframe, like, if, if we want to provide feedback within the next week, I don't, I won't prescribe any time to come back, finalize it, and then get it out within like a month or so. So a week for, or maybe even last time, if people already have them, provide it to you guys, finalize, you know, say by the, the next, what are we? Are we three weeks out from the next council meeting or two?
When does Go Polk City meet again?
Next Monday, March third.
March third, okay.
Our next meeting's the tenth.
Is that something you guys can get on the chat?
Either in the tenth or the twenty.
I see, I think that if you guys can give us your feedback on what you're thinking on the questions, we can come up with what we think is also good and finalize that and send it back to the city staff, of course, for like final approval. Um, and I feel like we could probably get that done by our next meeting, or in our next meeting, so March third. And then, yeah, deploying it from there, I think would be easy to do.
Because I would guess we need to open it up for, you know, maybe a month or so to allow people to respond, or at least a couple of weeks, I don't know. Um, I, like Mandy said, this now is as good a time as we're going to have.
Yeah, I agree. But I also think it might be helpful quick to talk about expectations after that. So I know that we want to get this and we want to figure out, but I think, again, it would be nice for me if after the survey closes, you just kind of give a little update, like, we got so many responses, here's a couple of things, but I would expect that it would take a little while till we get more tangible feedback, and maybe that touch base after it closes kind of, you know, oh, there was nothing in there really, that was material, and everybody's happy. Or, okay, we've got, you know, a couple of things to dig into, and we think maybe a rough idea, we would come back in two months, but I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd like to see this back to us by, by an April council meeting with action items and recommendations. I, I think that's, that's plenty of time, you can, you know, put the deadline for the survey date, but you know, if you get a scrag or it's not really going to matter if someone comes in late, data is still data.
Yeah.
That way we can come back and, like I said, hopefully April and discuss this and collectively discuss the action items and how we move forward on them, because I, I could see a, a follow-up survey. If there's information that we didn't think about or something.
Or so, yeah, something could come out of the survey.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I would see that as maybe part of your recommendation, is we either need another survey on this topic, or we need some focus groups, or, you know, your recommendation doesn't have to be, you should change this policy, you know, like
Right.
where we go from here.
If there's a consistent theme, then it might be pretty, pretty easy and obvious. You know, assuming that we can make those types of adjustments with the code, but yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, no, I think that that sounds like a fair timeline.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Are you coming to speak, Cliff?
Oh, thank you all know my name, Clifford Day Leonard. You know, I sold my place last year, and the developer was supposed to build a senior housing, and he has done nothing. Have you made any contacts for a theme to talk to him, or?
Well, I think that's a different conversation, Cliff, than what we're having tonight. Okay. How about if we just talk in between?
I'll tell him that, they don't tell me nothing, so I didn't, nobody will tell me nothing.
All right, we can talk in between, okay? Okay, thank you very much. Um, always appreciate your comments, Cliff, and always appreciate you being here, so thank you very much. Uh, okay, I think we've got a plan for going forward. And so unless there's anything else to add, I.
Thank you guys for the work that you're going to do on this, I think it'd be really valuable.
So uh, we'll look at adjourning our meeting then, and I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
And all in favor say aye, and opposed same sign, we are adjourned until council meeting, thank you.